Good afternoon and Happy New Year. On behalf of the City of Suffolk, I would like to welcome everyone to today's investiture ceremony. Although today's ceremony will look and feel quite different than those in previous years due to COVID-19 restrictions and precautions in place, one thing remains constant and steadfast: our council members to be sworn in today each share a common desire and commitment to serve the City of Suffolk, and would like to thank their friends and families, here physically and many virtually, that have joined them today and who will continue to support them in that mission. I would like to now ask everyone to please rise for the posting of colors by the Joint Public Safety Honor Guard, and to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by interim Police Chief Alfred Chandler, and the invocation by Dr. Stephen Blunt, Senior Pastor of First Baptist Church, Mayhain Street.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would we pray together? Dear Lord, for this moment and for all moments, we are grateful, we are thankful for this day in which we come now to celebrate and to recognize the advocacy of the embodiment of servitude and leadership. We ask now that you would go before us, and that you would be with us in the midst of this ceremony, and so that your name alone would receive all of the glory. In Christ Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chief Chandler and Dr. Blunt. You may be seated. As I look around, we have a number of special guests with us today in the chamber, as well as in our lobby, in our council conference room, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize our Mayor-elect Mike Dooman, Councilman Leroy Bennett, Councilman Roger Fawcett, Councilman Donald Goldberg, Councilman Timothy Johnson, Councilman Lou Ward, Councilman-elect Leodis Williams, interim City Manager Albert Moore, Acting Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes, Acting Chief of Staff Aziz Felder, interim Police Chief Alfred Chandler, Chief Mike Baraki, Suffolk Fire and Rescue, City Attorney Hellevy Holland, Randy Carter, our Clerk of the Circuit Court, Delegate Clinton Jenkins, and our other federal, state, and local elected and appointed officials, as well as city administration, city staff, and retirees, and of course, a most gracious welcome to the friends and families of those being sworn in today. Once again, thank you, everyone, for joining us. I would now ask that Clerk of Circuit Court Randy Carter come forward to proceed with the honors.
Mayor Le Dooman? Mr. Dooman, family? If you would back towards the podium there, please. Do you have a Bible or anything that you would want to use? Okay. Randy, if you would do the honors, please. Could you please place your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me? I, Michael Dooman-
I, Michael Dooman-
-do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge all the duties-
Discharge all the duties-
-incumbent upon me as-
Incumbent upon me as-
-the mayor-
The mayor-
-for the City of Suffolk-
For the City of Suffolk-
-according to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability-
So help me God-
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yay. Mask off. See you guys. You get to sit down.
See ya.
Councilman Fawcett. Candy? Candy, if I have you back to the podium there? Roger, if you would face me, please. The Bible, if you would like, please. Could you place your left hand on the Bible, please repeat after me? I, Roger Fawcett-
I, Roger Fawcett-
-do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge all the duties-
Discharge all the duties-
-incumbent upon me as-
Incumbent upon me as-
-a city councilman-
A city councilman-
-for the City of Suffolk-
The City of Suffolk-
-according to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability-
So help me God-
So help me God.
Congratulations, Roger.
It's a different world.
Mr. Ward? If you would stand, get back to the podium, please. I'm gonna wait till you give me the sign when everybody's here, okay? Everybody here, look.
Everybody here.
Okay. Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Lou Ward-
I, Lou Ward-
-do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia- -that I will faithfully and impartially-
Faithfully and impartially-
-discharge all the duties-
Discharge all the duties-
-incumbent upon me as-
Incumbent upon me as-
-a city councilman-
A city councilman-
-for the City of Suffolk-
For the City of Suffolk-
-according to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability-
-so help me God-
So help me God.
Congratulations, Lou. Councilman-elect Williams. If you would put your back to the podium there, just like that lady just said.
Will she come in?
Do you have anybody out there that needs to come in? You do? Okay, just let me know when everybody's here. We'll suspend until we get everybody in the house, okay? Randy, don't hurry. I know you are, but I'm not gonna do it. Everybody here, if you please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Leodis Williams-
I, Leodis Williams-
-do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
-that I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge all the duties-
Discharge all the duties-
-incumbent upon me as-
Incumbent upon me as-
-a city councilman-
A city councilman-
-for the City of Suffolk-
For the City of Suffolk-
-according to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability-
So help me God-
So help me God.
Congratulations.
In this strange world we're living in, it's funny that we still continue to smile behind our masks, and I know that we all are smiling today. Before Mayor Dooman speaks, I would like to invite the newly sworn council members to the podium if they would like to make any comments, beginning first with Councilman Roger Fawcett.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today. I'm gonna try to keep this brief. There's a clock up here, and I'm looking at probably 10 to 15 minutes, if you don't mind. I thought I'd get a little rise out of you, Mr. Bennett, and a few of you on my members of council, they always tell me, please, to cut myself short. I'm a man of a few words, I don't say a whole lot. But anyway, first off, just thank everybody for being here today. It's a great day for all of us here in Suffolk with our new mayor, Mike Dooman, congratulations. Leodis Williams, our new council member, and of course, Mr. Ward, our re-elected as well. I just want to say a couple of things. You know, I look back, this is my third term, this is the third time I've been at this podium to an investiture, and over the last eight years, I have seen just a tremendous amount of things happening in this city, a lot of great things. And as we always say, we don't always make everybody happy, but we do try. We try to do our best to put this city forward, and I always think of all the people, not just in my borough, which I thank the sleepy hole borough for allowing me an opportunity to come back and represent you for another four years. I anticipate I'm gonna work probably harder, probably gonna be a little more on point with some things that, you know, as we move forward, because we're not gonna sit still, we're gonna continue to move forward and make this city. It's already a great city, but we're gonna continue to make it greater and greater every day that we have to work here. I want to tell you that we couldn't do this without our personnel behind us. The City Council is just one piece of this, but when you look at the whole dynamics of what we do, it takes all of us as a team to make it work. It takes all of us on that dais to make it work, and we need to work with our employees that are frontline people, that bring us to the table with all these good things, our different staff members from the City Manager's office, and I want to tell you, and I don't mind telling you while I'm standing here, we lost a good city manager a few months back, he moved on to other things in life, but he was like a brother to me, and he was great to work with, and I loved working with that man, and I want to give him all the props, just in case, Mr. Roberts, you're listening today, I thank you very much, and your family and your sacrifice. However, with the City Manager's office and our staff of folks, like you see behind us, and our folks that are in the trenches every day, our law enforcement, our fire, we couldn't do it without you guys and gals. I mean, we really need each and every one of you, each and every day, to be here to do the things we're gonna have done and what we're going to do. I don't really know any more than I want to say thank you to my family. My son's with me today, and my wife's with me today, and my grandchildren, and of course, my daughter-in-law, who's been my financial person, Lindsay Fawcett, has been the rock behind the finances of my campaign, but we worked it with three people, and with the friends that we have throughout the community. So we did this on a ground grassroots effort, each and every time we've worked ourselves to make this happen. So I want to thank you all for your sacrifices, and you've certainly sacrificed the last eight years for me to be here and be involved with this city in doing a lot of things. I would like to take the time to thank each one of my council members, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Goldberg, along with Mr. Ward, and of course, you know, we've, and Mr. Dooman, of course, it's elected now for mayor, these guys have worked, they've worked, they're good guys, they've worked together, we all work together, they're phenomenal people, and I want to thank you for your friendship, your guidance in some cases, each one of you have helped along the way to see the path of where we're at. So with that, I won't tap anymore because they're all saying, get the heck off of this thing, and let somebody else come up here. My speech will be a little shorter than Dooman's because he's always good at really going long, and therefore, I'm gonna make sure that I put a clock on him also. But thank you, everybody, thank you very much, and God bless y'all, and God bless the City of Suffolk, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fawcett. We'll now hear from Councilman Lou Ward.
First of all, I want to thank God for allowing me to win a third time. I remember one of our councilmen's, former councilman, said, "This is not my first rodeo." Mr. Curtis Meertier, I want to thank my family, and my friends, and the people that supported me during all three of my campaigns before. It means so much to me because things are just not easy, you know, for me, during my campaign, I work hard, my people work hard, and I respect all the voters who vote for me the last three times in the Nasen Borough. I don't want to say, I don't say much, never do, be judged by it, but put that against the work that I do for my borough, plus my city. People call me from all boroughs, and I help them if I can, but I inform the city councilman in that borough to have a problem, because I'm willing to help anybody to have a problem in the City of Suffolk. I remember during the time when we sit up on the dais, our former mayor would say how good our city is, and compare them to the workers of other cities, and I got to say that. I think we got the best department heads, department cities, the police, the fire, the city manager, the helpers, I mean, I say that with truth, because every time there's a situation, it seems as though they always there, and I feel that if they can work that hard, I'm gonna work that hard, or better, or harder. So when you see me say less, don't think I'm not working hard for the City of Suffolk. And I want to mention this here, this last, this last race was a race that I wanted so bad that it took me, just looked a little different. There's always someone there for me, a young man named Johnny Edwards. I'd like to thank you, you're part of the family, and you know how hard it is for us to run a campaign with some of the things that attack us, and we win, with God's will, we win. This race meant so much to me, two reasons, a couple of reasons. I have a friend, and I call him a friend, he was running for mayor, and I backed him all the way, I did. And I'm gonna tell you why I've done that, because I've seen, and I'm proud to be in the City Councilman of Suffolk, because I know that what he gonna do, what he can do, hopefully he will, take this city to the next level. I really, I really appreciate it, it's not my time now, but I just want to say that from my heart, because you know, I'm always judged by what I say, but just like I said, judge me what I do. And I'm also glad for the city councilman, the elect city councilman, Mr. Williams, been proud of him ever since I met him, and I'm so glad to see that he won, even though we had a good city councilman, Mr. Meertier, but I know Mr. Williams is gonna do a great job. I'm proud to be on this council this time, this is one time I want to be on this council. I want to be known that during the times that I ran, people voted for me, wasn't elected, I wasn't appointed, I was elected, 3,000 votes here, 3,000 votes there, matter of fact, I ran for constitutional office, and got 8,865 votes. So my work has shown to me, and that's what means to me, not what I say, what I say on council, or what I say at a speech, this is, this is hard for me right now, but guess what? I'm saying it from my heart, and like I said, to the people here in the audience, thank y'all, hope you have a great New Year, I plan to have a great four years on city council. So I thank y'all so much, and I thank my family and friends again, and all the supporters, I'm not gonna let you down, God bless you.
Thank you, Councilman Ward. We'll lastly hear from Councilman Williams.
Good afternoon. First, that's a hard act to follow, so I won't be long, it won't take me long at all, I did down some things that I'd like to read, and I won't be up here as long, okay? First of all, I would like to thank my family, Sybil, my father Wesley, my sisters, Mavis and Edith, my brother Marcus, also known as Boogie, Felton and Tyrone, my kids Ashley and Trayvon, my nieces, nephews, and other family members for supporting me during the campaign. My family really went above and beyond in supporting me, and really, they, I was a piece of work, so I applaud them for sticking and hanging in there with me. Also, I would like to thank my campaign manager, Brandon, my core team, my supporters, and the many volunteers that worked hard on my campaign, were passing out literature, making phone calls, putting out yard signs, working the poles, and spreading the word that helped me with getting elected. I can't thank you enough for the hard work and dedication that you showed me during the campaign. Above all, I would like to thank the citizens in the Wellaville Borough for electing me as your councilman. I'm excited and honored. As you may know, my personal motto is, "I just want to make a difference." As the newly elected councilman for the Wellaville Borough, it is my goal to work for the core city neighborhoods and the rural neighborhoods as a whole, because we are one borough. Some people were thinking that they was gonna be forgotten, but we are one, and I will represent everyone. During the campaign, I heard the citizens in the Wellaville Borough loud and clear saying, "We exist, we want to be heard, and don't forget about us." As your councilman, I will listen to your concerns, I will address them with the city manager, I will work hard on your behalf in trying to get things done, and most importantly, I will be your voice. I would also like to thank Mr. Meertier for his many years of dedicated service, and wish him well. I am looking forward to working with Mayor Dooman, my fellow council members, and the city manager, with addressing the needs of our citizens and maintaining our current bond rating as we continue moving our great city forward. Again, thank you for electing me as your councilman and allowing me the opportunity to serve the citizens of the City of Suffolk, the city that I love. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams, and we'll now hear from our honorable mayor, Mike Dooman.
Yes, there is a clock up here, Vice Mayor, but it's not working. Also, the Vice Mayor has a habit of pointing to his watch and letting me know when I start to ramble on a little bit, I just wanted to let him know I outrank you now, so I'm really not gonna pay any attention. But anyway, good afternoon, friends, family, distinguished guests. 10 years ago, I had no idea I would be standing before you as the second elected mayor of our great city. I want to congratulate Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Ward behind me, and welcome our new councilman, Councilman Williams. You have to get used to that title, Councilman Williams, and you get to be honorable, I found that out when you get elected, all of a sudden you get to be honorable, so that'll be on your mail, too. In 2010, I decided to delve into the arena of public service as an elected official. It was something I had never envisioned or aspired to, but with the encouragement of others and the thought that I could make a difference, I ran for city council. The citizens of the Chuckettuck Borough placed their trust in me to represent their interests. I made a commitment to honor that trust and accept the responsibility to the best of my ability. I later accepted that same responsibility in 2014 and 2018, each timed with renewed vigor and a sense of purpose. The citizens of Suffolk have now chosen me to represent them as their mayor. I am indeed humbled, honored, and most appreciated of that trust and support. I do not have the words or the time to appropriately and sufficiently thank all the individuals who encouraged me, supported me, advised me, and campaigned for me along this journey. You know who you are, and rest assured, I will never forget your help and your friendship. During my tenure on city council, I can unequivocally state it has been the learning experience of my life. Local governance involves and demands that one has a knowledge of budgets, capital improvements, comprehensive plans, strategic planning, personnel, land use, local ordinance, and much more, I'm sure I've left out a few, but the need to have an understanding of all these topics is essential, but is dwarfed by the need to effectively communicate with your constituents. One must have the willingness to listen and address concerns effectively and expeditiously. The knowledge that decisions could have a direct and profound effect on the lives of so many citizens weighs heavily on the process dedicated to derive those decisions. I have spent, and I'm sure many of my fellow councilmen have also spent, many sleepless nights analyzing and contemplating issues being considered, not only the immediate effects, but the future ramifications as well. My new position will only add to that angst, but rest assured, I'm prepared for the additional weight of that responsibility. 2020 has been a year that will never be duplicated, a year that no one could have predicted with unexpected challenges and uncertainties, a year that not only involved the economic and health effects of a pandemic, but also social unrest. 2020 has shown us that regardless of how we prepare, we can still be vulnerable to unforeseen circumstances that are beyond our control. The coronavirus pandemic blindsided our society like no other event in recent history. It has altered the lives and lifestyles of every citizen directly or indirectly to varying degrees. Government mandates and health concerns have affected businesses, schools, and everyday life. Companies have had to alter their business models, and many individuals are now working from home. Unfortunately, some businesses have not survived, and many individuals have lost their jobs. Our school system is labored diligently to provide virtual learning, and our teachers have responded in an outstanding manner to provide our children with continuing under education under the most trying conditions. Masking, social distancing, hand washing, sanitizing, and limited activities are now the norm as we await the continued distribution of a vaccine. I am pleased to learn that our city will be starting to vaccinate emergency medical personnel this coming Wednesday. Obviously, this is very welcome news, and I see the chief back here shaking his head. Obviously, this is very welcome news and I see the chief back here shaking his head in a beginning to the end of the crisis. Our city has responded in an exemplary manner and has proven that in trying times, our citizens will join together for the common good. Our city employees have effectively delivered essential services. Our first responders have continued to ensure our safety and healthcare providers have been committed to providing professional services. Religious and charitable organizations, along with many businesses, have given assistance and our citizens have contributed in numerous generous and compassionate ways. These benevolent actions demonstrate the character and true fiber of our city and its citizens. It is indeed what separates our city from many others in our nation. The results of the pandemic will have to be dealt with for months to come. Rest assured, our city will continue to respond in a manner that addresses any impacts affecting our citizens. I've been asked, and all during the campaign and even now, what is your agenda? What do you want to accomplish? What do you want to change? Let me start by stating that our city is in a very enviable position. We enjoy vast resources and a population projected for double-digit growth through the year 2040. Prior leadership, along with support from city council, staff, city appointees, constitutional officers, stakeholders, and our citizens have allowed our city to prosper and grow. Mayor Johnson led our city admirably for 14 years and we have achieved much during that time. I have been part of this process for the last 10 years, which among other things includes a triple-A bond rating, significant growth in business and capital investment, along with substantial job creation. During this time, significant investments have been made in infrastructure, recreational facilities, public safety, and schools. Our city's vision statement, that being the city council's vision statement, addresses public safety, financial stability, growth management, and comprehensive planning, planning, civic engagement, economic development, public education, the social well-being of our citizens, and transportation, all areas that continue to be relevant and remain priorities. My agenda is to acknowledge and continue to improve upon all of the previous successes and accomplishments. To achieve our full potential, we must embrace any and all opportunities to advance our vision statement. We must continue to be strong regional partners and negotiate from a position of strength. I will work diligently with our state representatives to advance initiatives that address our citizens' concerns and improve their quality of life. While our goals remain relatively unchanged, I will suggest new processes and perspective that among other things allow for increased citizen engagement, more equitable allocation of resources, and vigilant fiscal oversight. I will continue to be a strong advocate for public safety. Our law enforcement officers, along with fire and rescue, must be provided the support and resources to accomplish their mission. We must work collaboratively with and support our school system with available resources. If our city is going to reach the next plateau, our schools must achieve and be perceived as one of the premier education systems in Hampton Roads. I intend to bring enhanced transparency and promote inclusiveness. I will be accessible and responsive. I will tell our citizens what they need to hear, not what they want to hear. I will strive to eliminate any racial disparities and ensure equal access and opportunity. I've set a few goals for myself to accomplish during the next four years. If I can accomplish these goals, I'll be satisfied, but most importantly, our citizens will be satisfied. First and foremost, I want this city to be in a better position four years from now than it is today, keeping in mind, we're already in a pretty good position. As many of you know, I'm an advocate of numbers because numbers are not subjective. Two plus two always, will always be four regardless of your opinion. Numbers also can tell a story. After reviewing the final results of the election, they confirm at this time, at this very moment, I enjoy support from all four corners of our city, not one particular geographical area or one particular demographic. My second goal is to maintain that support until the end of my term. If I can accomplish this goal, there will be a continued degree of unity and cohesiveness among all our citizens. The final tally of votes indicates I received the support of 20,038 citizens, which represents 41.64% of the total votes. Combine that with the other stats and I was feeling pretty satisfied with myself. And then reality set in. If you tally the number of people who voted for one of the other three candidates, the total is 28,080. That means 28,080 voters thought somebody else could do a better job than me. That in itself is eye-opening, which leads me to my final goal. That goal will be to, at the end of my term in office, reaffirm to those 20,038, they made the right choice, and for the other 28,080 voters, for them to have little or no regrets that their candidate did not win. Rather lofty goals, but if accomplished, the end result will be a successful four years. I realize that this office is not a popularity contest and I will never be able to satisfy all the people all the time. I respectfully ask for your patience and understanding in the coming years. I still have much to learn and I am dedicated and committed to the task. I will take no offense at anyone questioning my judgment or my ultimate decisions, but there will never be a reason to question my integrity or my motives. My experience has taught me that any significant change creates a certain amount of apprehension. The best way to alleviate or minimize any apprehension is to explain expectations. In the end, expectation is always what determines satisfaction. A good friend and colleague is frequently telling me, and I quote, "Mike, just be yourself and you'll be fine." I intend on adhering to that advice. The voters elected me based on my record of representation while serving 10 years on city council, along with my community involvement for over 40 years. What you can count on is that what I will continue to prove upon, but not change what you have come to expect. I have used the pronoun "I" a lot. As they say, there is no "I" in team. I fully realize that to meet any goals required a collective effort of our entire council, our staff, our appointees, dedicated employees, constitutional officers, school system, and our citizens. I want to thank my management, staff, and my employees. I would not be able to attempt this undertaking without their dedication. I also want to thank my family for their love and support, especially my wife Fran. I'll stand up. She has had my back for over 48 years and provides me with a sounding board and encouragement at the times I need it most. None of this is possible without you. I've been afforded an opportunity that comes with an immeasurable responsibility. I will not take that responsibility lightly. It will be one of the last chapters of my life. I hope and pray it will be a chapter well-written. As is customary, I will end with a quote. This quote is from Valerie Jarrett, and that quote is, "When you are in local government, you are on the ground and you are looking into the eyes and hearts of the people you are there to serve. It teaches you to listen. It teaches you to be expansive in the people with whom you talk to, and I think that that engagement gives you political judgment. Thank you and I look forward to serving and what the future holds for our great city."
Again, we'd like to thank everyone for joining us today. We deeply regret that due to restrictions and limitations, we're not able to meet together for a reception as we typically do so that you could pass along your own personal congratulations to the honorees. I would ask that you please rise once again as Dr. Blunt provides the benediction. Following the benediction, there will be a brief reorganizational meeting. Dr. Blunt?
Again, God, we are grateful for this day, for this moment, for all that our eyes have seen, our ears have heard, what our hearts and our souls have felt alike. Again, as we come to celebrate and to advocate the great mantle and the emblem of public servitude, we ask now that you would be with all of those who have now celebrated this mantle of elected leadership. Be with our newly-elected mayor, we pray that you would be with our newly-elected city councilman, that you would be with them, that you would lead them and guide them, and that their representation of this city would also in many ways be a shining reflection of your kingdom. We thank you for the staff of our city, we thank you for the personnel of our city, we thank you for all of those who serve as embodiments and part of the entities of public service within our city. We thank you for all the citizens of this city that represent the great tapestry of this community and for all of the men and the women and the young people who are part of the great heritage of the city of Suffolk. And now, as we leave from this place, but never from your presence, be with us, Lord, as you've always been with us in the past, and we'll continue to know that you'll be with us in the future. This is our prayer. In the name of our risen Lord, our returning King, Christ, and Messiah, we do pray. Amen.
Councilman Dooman, excuse me, Mayor Dooman and fellow councilmembers, the dais is now
At this time, the floor is open for motions to nominate an elected Vice Mayor. Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
If there's no further business to consider, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Agreed.
First and second. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.